Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 p.m., Tuesday, September 25, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As we begin your public work session this evening, the first item that we have for you will be a review of your plan of finance. I'd like to recognize Mr. David Rose from Davenport, who is the city's financial advisor. This has really become a standard presentation that we actually do about this time of the year that talks about how we'll look at financing some of our debt. Mr. Rose?
That's us, right? You don't press?
No, I don't.
So we'll copy this, but I'll give it to you. We have it. Get your heads.
Yeah. Yeah.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, pleasure to be here again. I'm not going to be too long this evening, but would like to just spend a few minutes, as Mr. Chandler said, sort of going through capital plan, where we are, and what we'd like to do over the next couple of months. With that said, on page one, you may recall back last December, we came to you and did something similar to this and talked about both the general government needs for the capital program, as well as the utility enterprise fund. At that time, we talked about making sure that we had funding on a just-in-time basis for both of those particular funds. And as a result of that, we talked about going forward in the springtime and doing some funding for the utilities, which we did, and also talked about not really needing cash at the time for the general fund. We also indicated that we would probably be looking very hard at whether or not we would need some of that cash by the end of the calendar year, and that's part of why I'm here tonight. You may recall that back in March of this year, in moving forward on doing the new money for the utility side, we also teamed it up with some refunding opportunities, and we had a fairly substantial issue. We had about $35.5 million of refundings that were done with the $50 million of new money for the utilities, and we had about $2.5 million of savings that we took over the period of time the bonds were outstanding. We did not extend any of the maturities, we just simply exchanged higher interest rates for lower interest rates. So that's what we did. Where we are today is, we will talk a little bit about the next phase of funding, and that is the general fund. We are in good shape with regard to the utility enterprise fund. We don't see ourselves needing any of those monies in terms of new monies for probably a solid year and a half. The thought was, you may recall, with the utility enterprise fund, to borrow every two years, as opposed to having to do this every single year. But where we are, you may recall, is with the general fund, we have a scheduled payment to the developer to the tune of slightly under $5 million shortly after the new calendar year. So we are gearing up to do, once again, a funding for the developer. That's not the last of the payments, we're going to have some more the following year, all as part of that overall roughly $80 million that you had committed to several years ago. But we're also looking at possibly, and that's the key word here, possibly some other general fund capital projects that are part of your overall approved CIP that could maybe require us to borrow upwards of another $3.5 million. Now, I keep putting a caveat on that, and that's because, right now, as we are finishing up, your staff is the 2012 fiscal year, we're trying to determine to what extent we may need to want to borrow that $3.5 million, or up to $3.5 million roughly, or can some of that be deferred again another six months or a year? And that's the type of thing that we're trying to do. You'll recall that, from our perspective, as your advisor, we're trying as best as possible to limit the amount of debt outstanding and to do things too far in advance, all because, again, you're paying extra interest. On the flip side, we also know that interest rates are very favorable right now, so, again, it's sort of a balancing act to figure it all out. That being said, what we hope to do is to get your approvals to at least schedule a public hearing, and you'll see that schedule in a couple of moments, because we need to do a public hearing for any of the new money, meaning that $3.5, $3 million we already had from bond counsel. McGuire Woods has already opined that the quartz project, all of that has already been effectively pre-approved, if you would, in terms of public hearing-wise. We don't need that with regard to public hearing. So one last thing here, on the bottom of the page, as you expect, and I would hopefully expect, we're continuing to try to monitor the markets for refunding opportunities. You have a large portfolio. Right now, we're seeing about $16.5 million that could potentially be some savings for you, and if that's possible, if it stays that way over the next couple of months, basically 60 days, we're going to try to refund as much as possible with the combination of the new money, sort of take advantage of what we'll call the economies of scale, and do it all at one time, if possible. Just simply, before I get to that other page, we'll just show you how interest rates sort of keep coming down. Depending upon which indices you look at, we're clearly around 40-year lows in interest rates, and we're not really very good at being soothsayer as when rates might go up. But, again, it is looking favorable for now. With that being said, I indicated we have about $16.5 million. You can see there, it's a combination of different pieces of debt. There is no very large savings per debt pieces. We're really thinking about trying as best as possible just to continue to shave some of the interest rates, and, again, we're trying to do that and make sure that we have at least a certain present value savings of about 2.5% to 3%. That's typically the range that we don't want to go below, otherwise, it just doesn't really make a lot of sense to refinance. It's more, you know, just doing it for the sake of doing it makes no sense. So we want to make sure we're getting a certain minimum savings level. That's around a half a million dollars, to upwards of $600,000 to $700,000, the range that we're looking at. And the reason I keep saying the range is that you all probably know, we don't control the interest rates, they change on a daily basis. They may come in, they may come out, especially that we're about, just about 50 days away from a federal election. It's always kind of the silly season, as we call it, in our markets. People make a lot of expectations or concerns, and we just see rates sometimes have a tendency to be extra volatile around a federal election. So we'll just see what happens.
When would you look at that refinancing occurring?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
What timeframe for the refinancing?
We're going to show you in a couple of seconds, but basically, it's about 60 days away.
Okay.
It's going to be, and I'll show you why there's a sort of a progression for that in terms of just getting some of those things done.
And the refinancing we did last year netted us $2 million, I think you started off with.
More than that, actually, it was about $2.5 million on about, let's just say, $35.5 million of debt refunded. So that was a very sizable issue. It was just that rates had moved a good solid 1% in a certain period of time, and so we took advantage of that.
And our strong ratings that we...
And your ratings are very favorable.
Right.
And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes, because that's part and parcel to being able to go back into the marketplace is getting our ratings reconfirmed, and that's going to be something we cannot take for granted. So we'll talk a little bit about that. With that said, I've been alluding to, on page five here, your capital funding plan. You all are very much aware, you had approved, when you did the 2013 fiscal year budget, you approved the five-year CIP, the 2013 to '17, and you can see by year some of those various projects. And I said a few moments ago that we had two more payments on the quartz project, the $4.75 million here in 2013, and then we're going to have another payment of a little over $9 million. That's the last payment that we owe to the folks in Bob Williams' group. In addition, you've got some other projects out there that we sort of lumped together, and if indeed, from a cash flow standpoint, a requirement standpoint, you could see there in 2013, we have about $3.5 million. So that's the number that we're asking to put on for a potential public hearing. It doesn't mean we're going to do upwards of $3.5. We may do none of that. Part of that will, again, be what it looks like cash flow-wise and timing-wise, which should become a little bit more apparent to us over the next 30 to 45 days. All told, we see, again, a CIP of about $57 million, of which a good portion of that is borrowed. Some of that, for example, you could see the Churchland Bridge in 2015. Those are the types of things that you all, of course, have the ability to move around, to slow down, whatever. But having said all that, what we do know is, again, if anything's hard and fast, it's that $4.75 that we do have a deadline for right after January 1 that we have to meet, and that's all been part of the overall timing and expectation. So there's no surprises here, it's just as we're getting that just-in-time mode, we've got to address that, and that's why I'm here tonight. So what is our plan of finance, if you would? I mentioned a few moments ago, trying to take advantage of what we call the economies of scale. It's a nice fancy way of saying, if we know we have some new money, if we can piggyback the refunding, go through the cost of issuance once, go through the, sort of, the whole issue of interacting with the rating agencies, ideally, one time, that's the approach. One of the things that's critical there is to be able to present to the rating agencies how we finished up the 2012 fiscal year. As you all know, your audit is not technically due and finished to the state by basically early to mid-December of every given year, but what we will have to show the rating agencies is some unaudited numbers, and some, in effect, a sense of how we finished out. That's very, very important. Hopefully, we don't expect any surprises, but, again, it's the type of thing that's going to be critical, Mr. Wright, Mayor, and all to the council, as to what they'll look at when they look at the city in the next few weeks. The other thing that we're going to recommend, and I'm going to just touch on this evening, is revisiting our financial policy guidelines. We recommend doing that every two to three years. We're in that cycle. We see a couple of thoughts here that we'd like to share with you. What we're thinking is, we're going to share some of those thoughts with the rating agencies, get their feedback, and then come back to you sometime, probably after January, and ask you to perhaps look a little closer at some of the policies that we're thinking about, as, again, ways of strengthening the city financially and safeguarding it. And then, lastly, you may recall, we've had some look at your two closed pension funds. We're in the process of doing that. I suspect the city manager is going to schedule something probably into December or January, when all of that work is finally done, to talk about, you know, where that stands. That's something that's been a hot button nationwide, as you know. Literally, every week in the paper, there's talk about that, whether it's statewide for Illinois, or citywide for different local governments. We know that's an issue that we're dealing with, and we'll prepare to talk to you at length a couple of months from now on that score. So just to give you a little insight with regard to financial policies, you have a number of financial policies that involve not only debt, but fund balance, that involve capital funding, a variety of things. And one of those here, just to give you that sense, has been your rainy day fund. It's your, in effect, your undesigned, now it's called your unassigned fund balance since the Gatsby '54 pronouncements occurred this year. What it really is, again, it's your rainy day fund, it's the monies that are not committed to anything, but are there in the case of emergency, in the case of cash flow, when it comes to paying bills in the given course of a year. You'll recall that back in 2008, 2009, you were not in compliance with your policy, thanks to some of the things that the city did. You were back in compliance in 2010, you're in compliance in 2011, and based upon some early numbers, we see yourselves being, again, in compliance in 2012. So, again, short of something that comes up that we're not aware of, we see that being a third year in a row that you'll be in compliance. You'll notice in 2011, you spent some of that unassigned monies on some one-time projects, and you had, again, a certain amount over and above your policy. That's the green there, and you may, again, depending upon how the year ends, 2012 ends, some of that will get spent, perhaps, but, once again, it looks to be in compliance as a policy. We're not suggesting changing that policy by any means, but we are suggesting that that is the single most important, in effect, policy that the rating agencies look at, and we just wanted to point that out. So that's a critical thing, and just wanted to give you a heads up.
Brought it up just to recognize its significance.
Yes, sir, that's exactly right.
But don't touch it?
Don't touch it, that's right. If anything, I'd look to strengthen it, but, again, don't touch it is our recommendation.
Don't touch what portion of it? The 15%?
The policy, yes, sir, the 15%. That is the policy.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes, sir, that's the policy, the 15%. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Rose. The next policy that we are going to at least serve up as a trial balloon to the rating agencies is something there called debt service versus revenues. It's a policy that you've had, it's one that you meet, just so we make it clear, but it's one that we have started to look hard at and recognize that it really doesn't compare with some of your neighbors in Virginia. And when I say neighbors, I'm really talking about other mature urban cities throughout Virginia. This policy, frankly, is not fully inclusive of all your various funds that are not self-supporting. The golf fund, for example, is sort of accepted from that, your debt is accepted from that. What we really see is the rating agencies count that. We also see a number of carve-outs as it relates to some of the school monies that you get from the state. When we really look at you compared to other folks throughout the state, your policy has certain carve-outs, and it says you can go up to a 12% threshold. One of the things that we're going to recommend is bringing that threshold down to 10%, but having a larger denominator, if you would, taking away the carve-outs, bringing in some other pieces of debt that have been sort of, what I'll call, for lack of a better term, off-balance sheet, and really bringing that all back into the city, because that's the way in which the rating agencies really look at local governments in Virginia. It's a cleaner way to look at that. We did this recently, last year, specifically with the city of Richmond. They were like you in their policy. We further strengthened that, made it, again, more transparent, and the rating agencies seem to take that well, and so it's something that we're going to recommend.
Are we gaining anything other than just clarity, or...
I'm sorry, I'm...
Are we gaining anything doing that, other than clarity?
Yes, I'm going to show you right here, you've sort of anticipated that. What you gain by doing that, even though you're going from 12% of a smaller denominator to 10%, it's more of a sort of a universal standard. It's a debt service versus revenues that, again, really account for the bigger pot of revenues that go and flow through the city. And so what you are gaining, from our perspective, is, over the course of several years out, you gain some more debt capacity. You effectively give yourself the ability, and not suggesting, mind you, that you do this, you're giving yourself the ability to undertake some more debt without, again, broaching a policy, but at the same time, let's be clear, it doesn't give you any more cash flow, it's just simply giving you a capacity to do that that's more in line with your neighbors. Hampton did this a number of years ago, Richmond did this. Again, we can go into some more details, perhaps, at a time that we give a more thorough financial policies overview, and maybe that comes in a January timeframe or something that you all suggest. But I just wanted to point that out, and we see that as the kind of thing, as we continually sort of review the city, that we're moving in line with. And, again, we'll find out, if indeed we go and talk to the rating agencies, what they feel. All right. So having said that, I've only got a couple pages left, and then I'll be quiet. What is the schedule, then, in terms of if indeed we go and talk to these folks? Here I am today, on the 25th of September. What we would be asking is that council at least sets the public hearing date. The date that we're thinking about is October 23, and there's some reasons for that. Part of that is, of course, working backwards from various public hearing dates. It also gives us an ability to know, hopefully, whether or not, indeed, we really do need, or how much we need, for that public hearing. Obviously, if we get to that date and there's none of that $3.5 million necessary, then the hearing itself just doesn't need to occur, but at least we're giving ourselves the license to move forward, and that's really the focus here. Having said all that, we will continue, over the course of the next several weeks, to, in effect, evolve with the various legal documents, put together our credit package. The thought here is to get those things finalized, and so I would be back on the 23rd of October telling you what we think we might need. Also, I'll give you an update on where the refundings, they may go higher, they may go lower, who knows? We'll do that as well, but we don't need a public hearing for the refundings, and that's why, again, it's limited to that roughly $3.5 million. If we have all those occur on the 23rd, what we're thinking about is then having discussions with the rating agencies within the next few days after that. We'll set those up over the course of the next few days, then hopefully get ratings around the early part of November the 6th, mail the offering circular, if you would, a couple of days later, and then around November 15th, go into the marketplace if it looks favorable. In reality, even if it's not that favorable, we really have no choice, we need to borrow that $4.75 million. If the market looks particularly ugly, we could do some short-term borrowing of that $4.7 million, which we're planning to anyhow as a possibility. It all just depends upon cash flow and giving ourselves the best opportunity to permanently have interest rates on that portion of the $80 million. With that said, the goal would be to close this by December 1. That gives us the best chances, if you would, to take advantage of the refundings, if indeed they do work, or some of them work. There's a payment on some of those on December 1, so the thought here is, we're trying to close, if it does work, by December 1. With that being said, happy to answer any questions, and appreciate the opportunity.
Good job, thank you. Vice Mayor?
With the close of 11, we had about $5.2 million surplus.
Of 11, you said?
Yes, 11.
Okay.
And the manager convinced this council to add it on top of the $33 million or the 15%. Should we have used that rather than borrowing money to... You're talking about borrowing $4.7 million, should we use that $5.2 million to do that?
I'm not sure, I understand exactly the question, Mr. Whitehurst, when you...
We have $33 million.
Right.
Which is a 15%.
Right, okay.
We picked up another $5.2 million, which is sitting on top of the $33 million. Should we use that to borrow another $4.7?
I think the thing is this, the $4.7 has always been necessary, and in our cash flows, we've always needed to borrow for that, for the quartz. We've had some other things that you've paid cash for, and hopefully, we'll be able to pay cash for. It really depends upon how the fiscal year 12 ends, and some of those extra costs and things that you had over the last year. So I think, basically, you know, given the tight economic environment, I'm not sure there's a lot of millions of dollars extra sort of lying about. I don't necessarily see that, but we could talk some more about that perhaps on October 23.
Should we have a policy on the 15%?
Yes, sir.
Should we have a policy on anything over top of that?
Again, we have thought about and talked about trying to use certain cash on an annual basis to take care of different capital needs, and not, for example, have to rely totally on borrowing. That's not a practice that we want to do. Having said that, that's an ideal, given the various pressures that you have, given the economic environment, you know, if that's, that could be a policy that, again, we may want to look hard at, but, again, we've got to be practical and pragmatic.
I was going to mention, too, and as Mr. Rose mentioned, keep in mind, council, you actually did put in a budget stabilization policy a couple of years ago. The challenge is, then, you really haven't had a great deal of money to put in.
Right.
We had to find that.
Well, you know, the budget stabilization piece is fine, but what we haven't done, and we've spent a lot of time discussing it, is what are some of the options that we could do with it? You know, I equate it to, every once in a while, you're reading the paper, matter of fact, there was an article this week, I forgot whether it's Nevada, somewhere, a fellow passed, and he was a hoarder, they thought he was down and out, come to find out, he had $7 million stashed away in his house. You all probably read that as well. I equate it to that. The city has a lot of needs, so let's, it's fine, I'm a firm believer that we adhere to our policy, but if you've had a good year and you've got money over that, let's start addressing some of these needs, and that's this council's responsibility to define what we're going to do with that money. You know, budget stabilization's fine, but the rubber doesn't necessarily meet the road there in getting this, a lot of this deferred problems, flooding, for example. How many times, we can dust off numerous consultant reports on our flooding needs in these communities? Infrastructure, we've got a lot of infrastructure backlog. So my contention is, let's, council, adopt, okay, when we have that surplus over our 15%, let's do something with it where citizens can get the benefit from it, instead of stuffing it under the mattress.
Anybody else?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
And maybe this is a question for the manager. Where are we with the report on the pension plans? You know, because if we've got extra money, I mean, yeah, we have needs, but I think the pension plans are the biggest hole we got right now. When are we going to hear about that?
I was going to say, I think Mr. Rose had covered that in his presentation, that they're working, the SideSmart did one component of that.
Okay.
Davenport has that, looking at it, I think, timeframe.
We basically are another 30 days away from having something. The SideSmart did their piece. We went through it with them, got some good information, insights that they provided us. Now we're taking that, as Mr. Chandler said, going to sort of part B, if you would, our work that really, that I'm working on, my colleagues. We see ourselves probably having something staff-related in the next 30 days. At that point, then we, of course, need to review it, make sure our assumptions and things, so that's maybe another, again, you know, 30 days. But I think we're thinking about, towards the end of the year, the goal has always been, I believe, to really have you be able to go into the next fiscal year with a good sense of what something like that might mean, what the options are when you look at that. So that's what we're...
Just in time for Christmas.
Santa Claus.
You know, that's one of those needs, and obviously, that's high priority. Another thing on the list is the set aside that we do with our former employees. We wish them a happy 65th birthday, and, oh, by the way, 50% of your social security is going to be deducted from your retirement, so...
You mean offset?
Yeah, offset, I'm sorry, but you all know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, very much, council.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Okay, the next thing we'll move to is hot topics, and the first item we have is, we'll title an assessment correction, and I'd like to recognize the city assessor, Ms. Janie Culpepper.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. First thing I'd like to do is pass out rather, two rather large maps to you, and the reason that they're so large is I wanted you to be able to get a total overview, trying to anticipate some questions that you may have regarding this. Just over a year ago, there was a parcel of property on Wyatt Drive that...
First thing I'd like to do is pass out rather, two rather large maps to you. And the reason that they're so large is I wanted you to be able to get a total overview, trying to anticipate some questions that you may have regarding this. Just over a year ago, there was a parcel of property on Wyatt Drive that was owned by Wild Duck LLC that was transferred to the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Virginia Court Authority. The transfer made to the property should have been a tax-exempt transfer. It was not. As a result of this, the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Virginia Court Authority had taxes that were put forward for that year. The tax status in our database was not changed. As a result of that, the property continued to be assessed with taxes. The taxes were actually paid by the new owner. A refund is legally owed, and an erroneous assessment and payment now needs to be corrected in accordance with the law. The Portsmouth City Code, Section 3514, requires that City Council approve any refunds in excess of $1,000. The amount of this refund is approximately $9,600, and thus, council is required to make the approval. There will be a repayment in the amount as indicated, and the property will be removed from the tax rolls. Otherwise, there will be no material financial impact. But let me also say to you that this property, even though we are removing it from the tax rolls, will be added to the VPA non-tax roll status, which will be, which will impact the pilot payment that is made annually. The pilot payment is usually made in March or April. It will increase the amount.
That's the $400,000, I think we're getting.
Yes, sir, approximately that. Currently, VPA has $126,476,870,000 in assessed real estate in the city of Portsmouth. We will be adding to that just over $756,000, which will bring the total owned by VPA in the city of Portsmouth to $127,233,250 will be the new total. That's the figure that will be used to calculate the pilot payment, which we will be receiving in either March or April.
How did we catch this?
Actually, the Controller for VPA called me and said, you know, the agent that does our bill paying has accidentally paid these real estate taxes, and we need to get our money back. So we started looking into it, and it was a clerical error. It's just one of those things that happened. And I will mention, this will be one of the good things that our new CAMA system will be able to do in that.
Pick up on that.
We can, actually, we'll be able to flag certain parcels by name, anything that would do with the Commonwealth of Virginia or VPA. If there was a transfer and it were not put in one as non-taxable, the system would give us an automatic alert, so it could be caught before this could happen.
Okay. How are we doing with the CAMA system? Where are we at now?
The contract was actually sent back, the signed contract has been sent back and is now making its way through the various departments for signatures on that. So we hope that that will be complete by the end of the month. And once that takes place, we'll be able to move forward with setting some firm dates on when the actual conversion will be beginning.
Okay.
And this will be presented on the 9th for formal approval of a resolution to repay these funds.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Madam Sessions. Okay, Councilmembers, the next item we have under hot topics would deal with the tethering ordinance. Of course, you have that item under items submitted by council on your regular agenda tonight. That was the item that was carried over from your September 11th business meeting. One of the things that you had asked us to do is you wanted to hear from the chief for a minute in terms of any research that he had done relative to tethering ordinances. So I'm going to call forward Chief Hargis, and what we'd like to do is just maybe take a minute or so of council's time this evening during your work session here, and also when the item comes up in the council chambers during your business meeting, to have him come forward and more or less cover or repeat what he's talked about here. But we just recognize, we have two different audiences. Some citizens don't attend both meetings.
Okay, very good. Chief Hargis.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
The work session two weeks ago, you asked me to go back and take a look at the proposed ordinance with a three-hour cumulative total tethering ordinance, and some of the surrounding cities that have that, and take a look at that and provide some information to you. Obviously, Portsmouth is considering amending Section 4.9 of the code here to make it unlawful for any dog to be tethered for more than three hours cumulative within a 24-hour period. Obviously, that brings some enforcement issues to light that hopefully go through this and address it. We did contact some other agencies that have that city ordinance in place, and from their responses, we developed a standard response protocol to tethering complaints. In most cases, the animal control officer is notified by a citizen who reports that a dog is being treated badly because it's been tethered too long. The animal control officer first will verify that there's no existing court orders preventing the owner from having ownership of an animal in the first place. The animal control officer will then take steps to confirm if a tethering was in compliance with the code or not. If there is a tethering violation, consideration will be given to charging under the state code of 3.2-6503. This code allows for additional penalties for subsequent violations, changes from a Class IV misdemeanor to a Class III. Or the animal control officer may provide education with the owner on tethering code requirements and take enforcement action as necessary for future complaints if they had to come back and investigate another complaint. If there is a citizen that witnesses the tethering to be over the three-hour limit, the animal control officer would encourage the complaint to gather the evidence by measuring the time that the dog has been tethered, and then also notify the complaint that they may be subpoenaed to testify as a witness in court, should it go to prosecution. All the agencies that we talked to, obviously, they don't have the resources to engage in active surveillance. The animal control officers in most cases do not go out and measure and sit back for three hours and see if a dog's going to be tethered or not. It's usually done by a citizen's complaint, and all of them recommended a public education piece, whether it's a full ban on tethering or a three-hour time limit, that there be a detailed public education to make sure that the owners know that there is a new code in place. So, any questions?
From an enforcement standpoint, that's got to be difficult, period, right?
It is.
You're going to rely on a neighbor who called the animal control officer in the first place to sit back and take a look at how much time the animal was tethered, if it was three hours cumulative or not, versus the overall care and treatment of the animal? Is there food, water, or shelter provided if they are tethered?
Mr. Moody?
I was going to ask, and I take it that the ordinance has a three-hour allowable...
The original one that came out was a full ban on tethering, and then that was amended, I think, based on the Virginia Beach.
Yeah, three hours.
And allowed for three hours cumulative within a 24-hour period.
What did, Chief, what did Virginia Beach have to say in their enforcement? I mean, is it community or citizen-driven?
It's citizen-driven when they get the complaints. Oftentimes, they do not enforce the tethering. However, they do enforce the care of the animal. And again, usually, it's for a lack of food, water, or shelter.
Right. And I think the three hours, once again, allows for the normal things that could possibly occur, you know, repair person.
You could think of all kinds of circumstances.
All kinds of circumstances, yeah.
In most cases, the responsible pet owner is going to have the dog out there for a short period of time.
Yeah.
The unresponsible people are going to probably have the dog tethered for long periods of time regardless of what's in three hours.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're going to, they can be manifested and being reforited by someone eventually.
Right.
But now, now we'll have a, have an ordinance, I guess, as a tool for law enforcement to take some action.
Another tool for the animal control officer to deal with citizen complaints as they come in.
Exactly.
I don't have my glasses, but this doesn't say three hours.
I believe it's F at the bottom.
Let's see.
Where does it say three hours at?
If it's the same copy I got last...
It's seven days.
We must have different copy.
Yeah, it's different. We need the three-hour copy.
This is the same, this is the same thing we had last meeting.
I didn't receive anything updated.
The one I received from the City Attorney's Office has 4.9, Section F. It shall be unlawful for any dog to be tethered for more than three hours cumulatively in a 24-hour period.
It's not on the... It's not on the...
Yeah. Wait, we can get that one.
It's not here.
Yeah.
What are... Yeah, you see, and you think about people that work, and I mean, we've had folks that call in at work and tether their dogs while they're at work. I don't know, any consideration, any discussion on that?
Well, I guess that's what the three hours, the three hours would allow.
Yeah, but nobody works in three hours and come back home.
Are you talking about for all day?
Yeah, we've got numerous emails with people that say they do that.
Oh, yeah.
At work and come home and take them to lose.
Well, if you're going, if you want to tether a dog for a whole workday, that's...
That's not good.
That's not good at all.
Eight hours working.
Ironically, after our last meeting, there was a case involved, I think we all heard it. I guess a citizen reported it, a dog had been tethered. Tragic case. Fortunately, I think, community society is getting the dog back to health.
As I said last work session, year-to-date, there were 39 calls for tethering complaints. Of those, 24 summonses were issued.
Okay. Is that...
Thank you, Chief. And again, as we had mentioned, we will have Chief Hargis come up, you know, as the item comes up on the regular business agenda, to say a few words as we've done here. The next item that we wanted to just chat about and give you a little bit of an update on would be the gate situation at the Naval Medical Center. From your last meeting, we have had a chance to talk to a couple of parties in terms of representatives of the Naval Medical Center. We did have a meeting with them along with the police chief and also our traffic engineering department. There are a couple of things that they are going to be working through and probably will be looking to come back to our public work session setting in about 30 days. The Navy is going to need a certain easement when they talk about certain modifications to that back gate, and we want to be able to show you fully, you know, what the impact is, what they're looking to do. They've also worked with, or worked with and will be working with our traffic engineering division to see if they can create maybe a three-way type stop situation when you come out of that gate. So it's a three-way stop coming off the gate, and of course, the other streets as well. So there will be a traffic management plan, as well as working with the police department on some of the things that we know come from the civic association as well, in terms of folks who might be speeding through the neighborhood and what selective enforcement program we'd be putting in place as well. So it's a little bit of a comprehensive plan in terms of how we'll look to address it, and we would actually look to have some representatives also from the command that actually handles the security, as well as the Naval Medical Center, in attendance for that meeting.
Very good.
All right. There aren't any questions there?
Mr. Hurts, you went to the civic league meeting, was there much feedback there?
Well, needless to say, Mayor, the Parkview neighborhood is very, very concerned about the level of traffic. They did indicate that some days seem to be a little bit better than others, but I can tell you that to a person, they were very, very concerned about this, and I think they were somewhat disappointed that the Navy representatives were unable to attend that meeting. They were anxious for us to do what we can, to liaise with the Navy commands, to see if there can be a workout available with the neighborhood, and to possibly consider undertaking a traffic study, you know, on our own behalf, just to sort of see if the problem is as bad as perceived to be. And I think those are pretty common sense steps for us to take. And we've had a long relationship with Naval Hospital, and I think we all want to preserve that to the extent that we can, but obviously, using Parkview as a thoroughfare for rush hour traffic is a little bit beyond what it was ever designed to do. So I, something's got to give here.
Have we, have we done traffic counts, or is anything, is the engineer going to do a traffic count there? I mean, is that what, is that in the works?
There are a number of things that they're looking, I don't know exactly what it all entails. I know the three-way stop is one element, but came up in the conversation with the ability to chat about other things that we would consider.
Okay. All right, so we're looking at roughly about 30 days.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or concerns on that? Okay.
So are we going to be coordinating something with, with the neighborhood?
Yeah, he's, yeah, absolutely.
I didn't know if there was anything else on tethering. I know you've got your new document.
This is the new document here with the Section F. It shall be unlawful for any dog to be tethered for more than three hours cumulative in a 24-hour period.
We will provide copies in the council chamber for the public as they come in, so...
All right, very good. Okay. Next, sir.
All right, the next item, Mr. Wood, is the follow-up on CCDI. And, you know, we have, my name's Mr. Hagwood and Mr. Cook are here with us. I'll invite them to join us. They're at the table.
Sir, how y'all doing?
Good evening. Hello, long time no see.
Yeah, that we...
Would it be all right if one of our staff joins us?
That's fine.
Monique?
Councilmembers, what we're passing around is a two-page spreadsheet. And one of the things that we had mentioned yesterday in terms of our homework assignment is that we were going to take the document that we had received originally from CCDI and be able to, it should be a top sheet and bottom sheet, two sheets, and be able to just spend a minute and walk you through, you know, what all the requests are. One of the things that you're going to see on the sheet, as we talked about the potential funding, I've mentioned we would come back and talk to you first in terms of what funding was available, either from community development block grant or the home accounts, and also what would be general fund. So we'll take a minute and walk through that. Before we get into that, as it's being passed around for everybody, I wanted to also address, we've done a little bit of research, not concrete at this point, but Mr. Moody had raised a question about what do other communities do relative to CHODOs? So we've had some telephone conversations initially. We don't have the court policies in hand yet, but to give you an example, the city of Newport News actually does do some version of a tax exemption. These are for older CHODOs in their community that may have been certified some years ago via legislation or the city council. However, in the last three to four years, for entities that may have certified, they don't do any type of tax exemption. In their process for Newport News, what they do is everybody pays their taxes, and they have a community reimbursement fund that the city council will put certain funding in, and they will give the disbursement back to the entity. So they receive their payment as a reimbursement back. All right, the city of Virginia Beach, we have confirmed, we'd mentioned one CHODO that certified with us the other day, that was the Southeast Development Corporation. We have learned from them and informed Virginia Beach that the Southeast Development Corporation, they are tax exempt in the city of Virginia Beach. So that's an example of a CHODO that currently would be now certified with you that experiences a tax exemption in another locality. The city of Suffolk, no tax exemption provided, and of course, the city of Portsmouth, no tax exemption provided. We weren't able to contact, we contacted, but haven't gotten information back from the city of Norfolk, so as...
Now Newport News, three years ago, changing because of what? The economy, budget constraints maybe, or did they...
I think it was probably the economy and budget constraints, as the manager had mentioned there, but what they said, about three to four years ago, they made a decision that any new entities, and they do have a policy, you know, that backs up their procedure.
Well, my question would be, since CCDI does business in Newport News, are you receiving a tax exemption from that city?
We are receiving exemption per property that we actually do construction on, so we don't have a blanket tax exemption, but we are exempt on the properties that we actually construct.
Okay, so...
So in the long and short, yes, we do receive exemption.
Okay.
And you said Newport News is where you only, they're only allowing you to do one house, one house, and then they can do another house, but one other time?
Under their new policy, correct.
Okay, okay.
And Virginia Beach is tax exempt, they, they don't tax their.
Right, and specific on that one example, that's what we've been, we've said so far. It's a good indicator.
And Suffolk taxed, and we.
Suffolk, Suffolk, no exemption, Portsmouth, no exemption.
Yeah, we oughta, there ought to be some consistency there, I think, within all of the cities, but, okay, let's go through the.
Okay. All right, again, just down the bottom actually represents, oh, I'm sorry, let me start across the top. We've done it in columns that deal with the requests that we had, and then we get into the funding elements, the general fund, home, of course, is the home fund through CDBG, and then CDBG funds, and then some notes on the side. The first item that we talked about was delinquent real estate taxes. If you see, the total there is seventy-three thousand, three hundred and nineteen. Remember, that was a breakdown of last year's taxes at sixty-eight thousand and change, and then that first quarter, that was mentioned yesterday. Okay, these things would not be eligible for any aspect of home funds or community development block grant funds, so we've listed that in the column, should you desire to make that disbursement, or give them money to pay the taxes from general fund dollars. All right? Next column down is positions or salaries. You see some salaries there, the community development coordinator, we take that that's a new position, as we talked yesterday, the housing director position, the community development block grant micro enterprise administrator position. As you see those three there, and we did go ahead and include the fringe benefits in that number, that's a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and ninety, okay? And as we put a note in the column there, we've got that under the general fund column at this point, and that references the fact that we mentioned yesterday, that the allocations for CDBG have already been made this year, and of course, for the home program for administrative cost. All right? If we move down to the next column, you see the next line would be the micro enterprise program. That program is one of those programs that had received funding previously, I think in FY eleven. It is really more so program services, a small portion of that does go towards salaries. We've put that under the general fund column right now. That could be eligible from CDBG funding that we do have, however, there is a process tied to that. You're familiar with the action plan process, in which if we went back to, we'd have to go back through the action plan process, which is a thirty-day process, in terms of, you know, public notice, and I think there's a public hearing that tied to that process as well. That would entitle us to go to that column or category to access thirty thousand dollars that we have there. So as you can see, I mean, if it's a quick fix this evening, you could use general fund dollars. If it's a little bit of a lengthier process, you would be able to access CDBG dollars to be able to deal with that. The developer fee for nine twenty-four Nelson Street, that's one of those, I think, staff-wise, I think we had talked to them about recommending maybe about four hundred, but in terms of the terms that they had carried the property, they had made a request of twenty thousand, eight hundred and ten. That is available from the current home funding allocations that we have now.
You say we recommended four hundred dollars, developer fee?
Yep.
And they're requesting twenty thousand, eight hundred.
Twenty thousand, eight hundred.
How do we come up with our number? What's that process?
It was based on, normally, we looked at it from a year's time of care on a property, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this was a property that they had acquired, I think, from another entity. Its location had some challenges, so after the rehab work was done, it actually took a longer period of time, probably about three years, to actually be able to get the property sold.
There's another little piece to that, that I think is important here. We, we did buy it from another entity. We actually did it for the city. The city was in trouble with this piece of property, and they were faced with a little over a hundred thousand dollars payback to HUD, and asked us to come in, step in, we would have never done it in this neighborhood, but they asked us to come in, and we did. And it took us, instead of a year to, to bring it to close, it took us three years.
Just to sell it, not to get the work done? You had the work done, just to move it?
Correct.
Right, that's right.
Yep.
So that's the development fee of the twenty thousand, eight ten, that had been requested. Okay, when you drop down to the bottom, that's the last section there, outstanding debts that you see there, and that was the sixty-eight thousand, four eleven, as it's been itemized, you see fifteen thousand for rent, nineteen thousand for audit and tax prep, telephone and technology, thirteen thousand, health insurance, six nine, copier replacement, seven thousand, upgrade technology, computers, three thousand, two, other bills that aren't itemized, but that total there is three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. That gives you your.
Hold on, Dan.
Okay, that wasn't me. Okay. That gives you your total of the sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven. If you come down to your bottom column, the total request there equates to three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and five. Of course, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five would be from the general fund, and then twenty thousand, eight ten, we would be able to take care of the home fund. If you go to the second sheet.
Can I ask one quick? What is audit and tax preparation fee?
That is our, our annual audit. When we have our audit, and our auditors come in, and, and they do our annual audit, that's the amount that's owed, owed to our auditors.
Okay, so for ten and eleven, so you owe this out to those?
Correct.
Professional services, okay.
Correct.
Okay, all right, the second sheet goes back to council's request for the accounting for the seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar grant that was done back in November, and you can see, as it's spelled up there, rent fifteen thousand, payments to contractors of five thousand and one thousand, one six five, you see payroll, thirty-five thousand, one eighty, insurances, health, real estate, seven thousand, two, and then business loan and line of credit, ten thousand, one. That gives you your total of seventy-three, seven fifty, and then you also see a bottom line, proceeds from sale of property, that was fourteen thirty-one prentice, that more or less, when you have proceeds from a property, they normally can be forwarded to another property that you would do, and they, at this point, they retain those proceeds at this point, so they haven't reverted back to the city. So.
The proceeds get reverted back to the city, or they have the latitude to move it over on another project?
There is some latitude to move it to another project.
Okay.
At this point, it's been retained. I don't think they've addressed whether or not it would be moved to another project at this point, but, but it is in possession.
So you've, have you already spent that?
Yes.
As well, so you've spent the sixteen thousand, okay.
All right, so the, the main thing that we wanted to mention, again, just an item I asked to walk through the things that were presented holistically, and hopefully, we've been able to represent everything that CCDI shared with us, again, to walk you through that, that the main question becomes for you all, and to meet the obligation, because I know they were working towards a deadline that they were working through today, if your desire is to take this as any type of item submitted by council, or anything of that nature, you'd be able to do that this evening. I think the directive that we would need to hear from you all would be that you want to do that, and you would probably take that, if it's the whole three oh two, four oh two, or at least the two eighty-one, five ninety-five, from the remaining unassigned fund balance. That would be the amount above your policy level.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Question I have, obviously, this is to get them whole, as we sit here tonight, is that accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay, go on forward. The Oasis Building that I became aware of, how, how's that gonna impact the, the revenue? And I'm saying that in the context that I think you mentioned last night, that you're only planning on bringing online, I guess, two homes that are under various stages of completion. So the revenue from that is certainly not gonna fill the pot up. So help me understand, if you would, how the future looks financially.
I asked Monique Harrell to, to join us up here. Monique runs our micro lending program with the SBA, and she's been with us about twelve years, and it, it addresses one of Steve Heretic's questions last night. Monique, when we started this micro program, we started at what we call Cottage Industry, and some of you have heard this. The first loan we did was for two sewing machines, Cottage Industry, two sewing machines for a young couple, and they were done with our son's memorial fund, as were the next few loans, and then we hooked up with SBA, state of Virginia, and a few others to, to bring it up to the level where it is now, where we've done about, little less than three million dollars in loans. So, and Monique has created about seven hundred and fifty jobs with that. So that's a big part of our, in fact, it's the biggest part of our going forward, and it's the biggest part for the past two years.
Yes.
That is our mainstay.
So, so when we talk, and I, what I'm requesting, I guess, is going forward, what, how's the business model gonna keep you in, in the black, and so, you know, you're not running in the, in the red?
Well, in addition to the grant funds that we receive to administer that program, we also do additional grant writing. For example, recently, I've submitted grants to Wells Fargo Foundation, BBNT's Foundation, as well as Norfolk Economic Development Authority, and there are other organizations and entities, private as well as public, that we've received money from historically as well.
And also, with regards to the Oasis Building, we are currently in negotiation to actually turn that building into a business incubator, which will generate funds, the CCDI will administer that program, and that would generate income as well, through, income through clients who will be housed there, as well as through grant funding for that program.
That, that's, that's good, if I may, comment, Mayor. You know, the, the requests, and certainly I've been voiced support in, supporting this, but the other piece of that, like, like any organization that comes before council, is do we, do we have the financials? I, I see what we have here, this is a spreadsheet of outlining some expenses versus some revenues, but do we have a copy of the financials?
When you say financials?
CCDI, oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, the most recent audit, and again, I'll yield to you all, because.
Yeah, the audit and the financials, yeah.
I provided, this morning, I provided our most recent financials, which is our two thousand and nine. Again, we are waiting for our two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven from our, our auditors, which they have to receive payment. However, we do have year-to-date financials that the organization keeps through our bookkeeper, which those as well are audited by our bookkeeper, so we do have those in-house for two thousand, year end two thousand and eleven, and year-to-date for the, for the first six months of two thousand and twelve.
Do we have those?
Out of your ledger.
No, I was, I just provided the updated audit, but I can't provide that information to council immediately.
Those are unaudited, what you're talking about?
Correct.
But your last audited financials that you have is back in two thousand and nine?
Correct. Even though we do have our financials that the organization keeps, they are run through Cherry Becken and Holland, through, through their system, so they are double-checked through them. They, they are a, they just aren't a part of the annual audit, but they are ongoing financial, balance sheet, profit and loss.
Oh, I understand what they are, but I think you were asking something from an independent audit firm, like Cherry Becken and Holland?
It does have the independent audit, the two thousand and nine, that is the last one that Cherry Becken and Holland gave us.
And where's ten and eleven?
Ten and eleven, they are still holding on to those for payment, which is the.
Oh, that's what you, that's the nineteen thousand.
The nineteen thousand, correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I want to ask, what, what will the hundred and twenty-four thousand enable you to do?
The hundred and twenty-four thousand will enable us, it'll enable us to do everything from the position salaries, all the way down to the outstanding debts. It does not cover the real estate taxes. So that encompass the positions, the housing director, community development coordinator, and the CDBG micro enterprise program, the development fee for nine twenty-four Nelson, and the outstanding debts. That's, that's what it covered. So that would cover the debts and all of the program services that we have up until December the thirty-first, well, actually, January thirty-first, when our other programs will kick in, in February, which would be our SBA, the potential of the micro, of the incubator, the small business incubator, and then our other housing projects over in Newport News.
So that will give you some stability to move on?
Correct.
Okay, one other question. Will that hundred and twenty-four thousand also include that bill of your audit and tax preparation fees as well?
Yes, it does.
The, the request, as I recall, that we discussed, was a hundred and twenty-four thousand, and I think to Bishop Edmund's point, a hundred and twenty-four thousand will get you on sound footing, correct?
Correct.
You know, and, and we're stewards of the public money, obviously. I, I would say, and that will allow you to pay your auditor to, to get a, a certified audit.
Yes.
Okay, I would, I would say we do that contingent upon a, a clean certified audit. I mean, would be my, my stance on that. That, that any payment would be contingent upon a certified audit from, from their auditor.
So you're saying release nineteen thousand to get the numbers before we do anything else?
I would say, yeah.
If it's gonna give you the figures.
To get the audit. And I remain supportive of the one twenty-four, but we, we've, we've gotta, we've, we've just gotta have an audit, I would think, is good business, as stewards of the public money.
Mayor, ma'am?
Okay, Mr. Heretic.
I'm still trying to follow your math here. According to what we've got, salary, position salary in fringe is a hundred and nine, five ninety. Outstanding debts total sixty-eight, four eleven. That's rough math, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. You're asking for a hundred and twenty-four, that still leaves a delta of fifty.
Based on our calculations, what was submitted, the hundred and twenty-four thousand was actually, and I didn't bring my file, it was, it was the outstanding debts, and the, we had originally asked for a quarterly allocation of thirty-four, nine, sixty-six, which was encompassed with the, if you divide the hundred and nine thousand, five ninety into four quarters, since we did apply for CDBG, we weren't asking for all of that upfront, we were asking for that in quarterly reimbursements, as well as the twenty thousand, eight ten for, for nine twenty-four Nelson Street. So if you divide the one on, the hundred and nine thousand into four quarters, that gave you thirty-four, nine, sixty-six, twenty-five, including, if you add that to the twenty thousand, eight ten for nine twenty-four Nelson Street, and then the sixty-eight thousand, four eleven, that came up to one twenty-four, one eighty-seven, twenty-five.
You know, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Doc.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm still trying to make sense of this, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
You know, if we, I, I think time is of the essence for them, and if we just give them nineteen thousand to get their audit paid, that's still not moving them. 19,000 to get their audit paid, that's still not moving them forward, it's hurting them. I can concur with Councilman Moody when he said contingent upon that, but I think since we kinda came to the conclusion last night, that we, we put them in this predicament.
Who came to that conclusion?
I thought we did.
Yeah, we contributed to it. We did.
Yeah.
We did. You might not agree, Mayor, but the rest of us did.
I don't agree with that.
Well, you and Mr. Heretic didn't agree. The other five of us did.
Well, it was discussed.
Okay.
Five of us agreed to that.
Happened.
Yeah, absolutely.
And from listening to everything that was said, it was obvious to me that that seemed to have been the direction that happened, because they didn't experience this until we start pulling away. And they have been faithful over the years, and I think that's credible as well. And I think now that they're going through some transitional moments, we shouldn't just kick them to the curb. I think we ought to at least extend that helping hand to see if they can. Somebody said it last night, get the ship back where it needs to be.
So, what are you proposing?
I'm proposing to help them with 124,000.
Contingent upon a clean audit.
Well, well, I don't, I don't wanna even say a clean, I wanna give them 124,000, and one of the conditions is that they, that they immediately pay for those two audits and turn those in and get those to us.
Right.
Yeah.
Not, not, not contingent upon, because you won't know the audit until they give it and pay for it.
Right.
So, if we make contingent upon a clean audit, we'd rather give them the money then. So, 124,000, and one of the conditions is that they immediately pay for those two audits and turn those over to us.
Yeah.
And we get regular audits from this day forward, if we continue, we continue to do business with them. That's, that's...
Well, they got two houses, I mean, the fact, the fact of life is, they got two houses they need to get online, and those two, those two houses need to be sold, need to get on the tax rolls. Right now, as they set, I'm sure they're not contributing to the beautification of their respective communities, so I think that's a return on our investment for the 124.
So, let me ask a question.
You're using, hold on, you're using that as collateral? You're saying that two houses?
So to speak, yeah, so to speak. And I don't know, a city attorney here is probably more adept at that question. We, we need, we need to structure something where we, it doesn't appear that we're just giving something with no collateral.
Collateral.
Vice Mayor, I can't pretend to even begin to understand what council is trying to do here, but if council would like to appoint a representative member, as one or two, to meet with me and tell me what your wishes are, I'll see what I can to draft legal instruments. But I honestly don't understand what's going on right now.
Sure.
My question to Mr. Hagwood. Condition, you need to pay for your two audits. You turn, you give some, copy those audits to the manager and staff, and we get audits regularly thereafter. Is that okay? You got kind of problem with that?
I don't have a problem with that at all. And as far as the, as far as the portion of collateral, those houses were done with home funds, so you guys kinda own that anyway, in the event, you know, we don't complete that project.
So, so I don't, I, I don't, I don't see what, why it would take a, a lot to structure that, but...
Don't take a lot to structure what?
I mean, to, to give them the 124,000, with the condition that they're gonna turn over the audits to us, and we're gonna get regular audits thereafter, but that, that doesn't sound difficult to me.
And remember also that we're audited by SBA, by the city, by the state.
And by HUD.
And by HUD.
So, that's not a problem for us to provide you guys with a copy of that, of our audit.
Mr. Manager, did you hear something?
Just a point of clarification, I mean, we just mentioned four types of audits. What you're talking about here is a financial year-end of book closeout audit. A HUD audit in terms of a property might be findings for compliance with the money that was drawn down. Just, y'all are talking about an audit, just like we do an audit at the end of the year.
I will interject, speaking of audits, this is an ideal situation where an independent auditor could, could work on behalf of council and staff to focus on this, come back with some, some recommendations, just wanted to make that point.
Good point. Good point, well taken.
Can I just make one other point of clarification? Just wanna make sure that we're straight. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Hagwood, again, if it's the 124, you've got 109,590 on the salary piece, and you'd also have a need for the 19,000 to be able to pay from that bottom outstanding debts piece, is the 124 gonna be sufficient to handle the salaries and that item?
The 12, yes. The 120, again, the 124 was comprised of, if you take the salaries, the 109, that's just lumped together. What we did was, because how CDBG is set up with quarterly disbursements, we decided to set it up within the same framework as what the city of Portsmouth had. So, we broke it down into four quarterly disbursements of 34,000. If you divide the 109,590 into four quarters, it would be 34,966.25. Okay? And so, actually, if you add the 109 and the, for the salaries, the 20,0810 and the 68,411, that comes out to, whatever that calculation is, less than the 73,319. Our calculations were based on the salaries being dispersed quarterly at 34,000. The 20,0810 for 920 Nelson Street and the 68,00411.
Okay.
And then after that, it would be three other disbursements of 34,96625 for the remaining quarters of the fiscal year 2013.
This one, though, has...
So, I just wanna make sure we're all clear on what, what the funding arrangement that's being proposed is. There's 109,000 and some change in salaries. Then, in addition, you had the 30,275 for the micro enterprise program. The two of those added together, including fringes, you had divided by four quarters. Are you, the 124,000 covers one-fourth of that salary and the micro enterprise program. It also covers the developer fee for Nelson Street, and it covers the 68,000 in debt. So, that gets you one quarter worth of the salary payment. Are you asking for a council commitment of four quarters, or are you just asking for enough money to get you through the end of the year?
It was a total of four quarters for 34,966.
Okay, so if, if we're, if we're looking at that, then the total that's being requested is not 124,000. It's the 281,595 plus the 2810, so it's 302,000 minus the delinquent real estate taxes.
Well, in our calculations, we didn't account for the 73,000, because we were told that that was because of the city ordinance. So, we had asked for amnesty of that when we came last night. Again, the salaries and fringe benefits, we divided that into four quarters, because those were basically made comprised of all the CDBG applications that we had submitted for the 2012 year, but they never got funded. So, we would've gotten that money on a quarterly basis anyway. We just stayed within the framework of what the city had actually designed. We were not trying to ask for all of that in one lump sum. We were asking for that in quarterly installments.
But then you're asking for a total of roughly 230,000, not 124,000.
No, we're not asking for it, that's, that's what was put here. We are only asking for the 124, 187. This, keep in mind, CCD, again, CCD, we did not wanna, the number that we came up with would get us back on track. We have already, we already have established programs that would take us forward, so that we wouldn't have to come back and keep asking, asking the city for more money. We've restructured our program so that the organization will be creating income since we did not have funding for the last three years. So, that 124 would just get us back on track, and then from there, get us ahead, and from there, the programs that we've already worked for and generated and established would move forward with creating income for the organization. This 281,000, we did not, we did not come up with that figure. This is the first time that I've seen that figure. I've just provided what the spread out, the spreadsheet that we provided to the city, which was the 124, 187. CCDI felt like we did not wanna ask for that much, because we didn't know if that was too much. We didn't wanna break the bank, so, so, the 124, based on our calculations of weeks of planning that, that would get us ahead, based on the income from the other programs. We still have SBA that's gonna come in. We have the incubator. We have grants that are coming in that will provide, that would get CCDI back on track. This 124 would basically cover those, this CDBG applications that we did not get funded for, the 20,000 for Nelson that we did not get funded for, and the outstanding debts generated over this year, because we did not get funded for home.
Mr. Moody.
Last night, discussing things, we saw this new position at 39,000. I thought we agreed, because I believe the justification there was that you having to bring that on because of the increased demand from the city on paperwork.
And we did take that out of our calculations, Councilman.
Okay, so that 39, you don't need that.
So, that's not a part of your 124?
No. After what was said last night, we, we went back and adjusted that.
I thought you, I can't do this. 39, yeah, go ahead.
From last night's conversation, as we had mentioned, staff went back and took a look at what was submitted, and we brought you back everything.
Okay.
We didn't make any eliminations on any positions, because you didn't give us any direction to eliminate any positions.
Well, I think it was kind of a consensus that we didn't need that one, didn't need a new position.
Yeah, 'cause I was, I mentioned it myself.
Yeah.
That the new position could go away, because we don't, we wouldn't need it, because I didn't suspect in the future we'd be requiring them to do 1,400 hours of reporting, so...
Do you have a sheet with 124 at the bottom in this breakdown, so we could see?
Yes, sir.
Where is that at?
Mr. Manager has that.
You need it?
No, I have a copy.
Yeah, make some copies, 'cause I'm confused, because we just backed out 39,000 and we're still at 124.
Yes, it's things on the sheet that we have, like a $7,000 for copier, is, you know, ordinarily, in the organization, say, oh, $7,000, but the wolf's at the door, so I guess the question would be, what's wrong with the current copier? Is it working?
Barely.
And if you looked at a lease program?
It is leased.
So, the $7,000 for a lease?
Yes, sir.
Just trying to replace it.
My copier is seven years old, and there is some, there is some old on that, on that old lease. And then, that's included in that 7,000, and to actually lease a new copier as well. So, that's all-inclusive, to pay that past due debt and on the copier, and to actually get a new copier.
Okay.
He's making these copies now.
I was gonna say, when you, I guess when you get the copy, that bottom section of the sheet that we've worked through today is the breakdown of that 68,000.
Correct.
I believe that's on your sheet there.
Right, the debts, outstanding debts.
Debt is part of the 124, that whole bottom section there?
No, sir.
The outstanding debt is not, none of that?
The outstanding debt is part of...
Of your 124?
My 124.
Oh, okay.
So, actually, if you take out that new position, the 39,312, that comes to whatever that number is. And our calculations were based on that new position, but since council went back and said last night that that position would be taken out, that is fine.
So, that 39 needs to be deducted from the 124?
Correct, and, and that amount would still allow us to meet our financial obligations.
How much is that now?
Zero.
Carl, you doing that?
70,288, that's what I came up with.
$85,000.
That crops it back.
That helps, it doesn't take care of the taxes.
That's 114,359.25.
You took 39 from 124 and got, and got...
That's, that's the point that I think there's still a little confusion on. They were asking for a total, total amount of salaries, which included the 39,000. They divided that by four quarters, and the 124,000 included one quarter, and it sounds as though you're only asking for that one quarter. So, if I take out one-fourth of the 39,000 salary, that's 98,28, and it leaves us with 114,359.
I just see one point, just not, not up here.
Okay.
There was, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, you did say the fringe benefits.
Were included in the numbers.
Were included. However, there was, there was another, actually, I see what it is. The 30,275 for the micro enterprise program should've been added into that 109,950, which gave you 139,950. That was part of a CDBG application that we also applied for as well. If you divide the 139, that 139,000 by four, that gave you the 34, the 34,966.
And also notice, it was mentioned, that the 30,275 was, was program, and some of that money, a small portion, was used towards salary.
Correct.
So, we didn't lump it all as salary.
Okay.
Because some of that was program funded.
Mm-hmm.
So, you got to take that.
Secret.
See, here, here is 31,2. See?
31,2. So, you've got here, new community development coordinator, 31,2, housing director, 29, and the fringes over here, and... What is the middle column? What, the 34, the 20, and 68? What is that? Is that like a running total or something?
No, I can explain that as soon, as soon as we get our, our copy.
And you call it, you say a quarterly reimbursement request?
Correct.
And you get 34,966.
That 34,966, if you add the salary and the fringe benefits together, that came out to 139,865, divided by four quarters, because CDBG is dispersed on four quarterly allotments. So, we were asking, since all of these fell under CDBG, to continue with the quarterly disbursements, which is the 34,966. That's four dispersed, that's, the salary and the fringe benefits divided by four quarters is 34,966.25. If you add that to the developers' fee for 924 Nelson Street, and the 68,411, that came out to the 124. came out to the 124,187.
But that included the new position?
Yes, it did include the new position.
So, take, I think, CFO said, what, 97.50?
No, she had different number. What was the number?
She had 118.
Miss Swindell?
It was, yeah, it was 114,359.25.
Yeah, dividing the 39 by four, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Which would be 97.50 per quarter. Okay, with that, once we get an audit.
Okay. So, we're looking at 114,329.55?
359.25.
359.25. I guess, Mr. Manager, process wise, how do we proceed if that's what consensus is?
No, no, the clerk has stepped out, but I will pinch it. I'm thinking whether it be items submitted by council members or that portion of the agenda that you would look to make a motion to this effect, that you would like 114,359.25 to be taken from the remaining unassigned fund balance above your policy?
Contingent upon...
Contingent upon receiving...
An audit.
An audit.
That's the tricky part, if we said contingent upon, they won't be...
Contingent is not the word.
Yeah.
In return, we receive a copy of the audit.
Right. Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah. Do we have a consensus, Mayor, on this?
I don't know. We're going to have a consensus on again? We're going to do what?
To appropriate 114,359.25 to CCDI, with the understanding that part of this money would be used to pay for audits, which were, with a copy of which would be immediately turned over to the manager and the city.
Repeat that.
Okay. To appropriate 114,359.25 to CCDI.
And I'm going to add to that, which, on the remaining undesignedated fund balance above policy.
Okay.
Okay, he put the other part to it.
Here, Mr. Simon, if I may say. So, I guess the question is, do we have a consensus on that?
Yeah, I'm for it.
You for it? You for it? That's two. You for it?
No.
You for it? That's three. You for, okay, that's four.
Mr. Cherry, I'll prepare your motion for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. What's next?
That's all we have.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, Miss Swindell.
Okay, hold on. Let's let them go. We still got other action here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to go before them? They got something?
Yeah. Mine has to do with the Finance Committee. We have a couple people that are about ready to resign. You don't do something to tell them what their job is. The Finance Committee will probably be extinct.
Well, as I recall, Vice Mayor, I think the last time we discussed it, as a council, we were going to do some brainstorming, strategizing to see if indeed there is a role for the Finance Committee to play. And I agree with you. If they don't have anything to do, that's the fastest way to lose a volunteer. So, but I don't think we can do it in the next five minutes. I think we need to devote some time as a council, and maybe come back to a meeting with each of us having ideas on the role we feel they should be involved in. I mean, that's my thought on it.
All right. What do you guys have?
Mayor, the Personnel Committee was due to convey some information that Tony Small Bembry collected for council, and council has already been copied on this. This is another copy, on feedback on the independent auditor, what that position represents in other cities, what it's paid, also what the support staff is paid. I don't know that we were copied on this, I guess, on the 18th, I believe, yes, 18th of September. But, as you can see, there's this salary range, I think, a high of 107,000 for the position, and I guess, a minimum of 64,000, 65,000. And on the second page, there's pricing salary range of the staffing for the auditor's office. And we, I think the next step would be to, once again, if there's consensus, to establish a salary range for the position, for the Portsmouth position, and also salary range for a support person. A couple of us are the mind that, to begin with, there would just be one support person in that department. I'm certainly not in favor of building a bureaucracy. Then, we'll have to get an auditor to audit the auditor, but I want to stay away from that situation.
They'll be extended.
I mean, next week, babe.
But, we, and looking at the salary ranges, I would, I would say we advertise something neighborhood of 80 to 85,000 for the position. And I know there was consensus because at the candidate forum, hands went up very quickly from those who are candidates. So, board's open for discussion and feedback.
So, if you look at somewhere between 80 and 90,000 for the auditor position itself, and I'm thinking somewhere in the 45 range for that staff person.
As a staff and administrative person?
We're not going to do all those. I'm not, there's three recommended here, but I don't think we need all that. If you see, you see the cities that have, they're much, they're larger cities with, so we won't, we won't need that to start with. I think we need that, that person needs to come in here and get themselves acclimated, and then figure out what we need. And if we give them one person to work with, if it evolves to that, to that phase, then we can go there. We could, we could require three and only authorize one, you know, so we'd, so we'll be there if we need it. We just have to find the money for the following budget year. But, but a staff of four, I think, is, is, is too many for Portsmouth for, for right now.
Absolutely.
I would be in favor of bringing the auditor, letting the auditor assess what his other need is.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Before we put a range on his help, because we don't need...
I think we need to authorize a person, so when he comes in to figure that out, we don't have to go down to his table and do all this again. Go on, authorize the auditor plus one person, let the auditor come in and assess it, and then go from there.
So, I guess what, what we need as a council tonight is to know if there's a consensus to have Tony to advertise for the position at that salary range.
All right, any discussion on this position and how we do this?
So, Mayor, what you suggest is that the auditor come on board and let him...
We bring the auditor and then defer to that.
I'm in.
Actually, we're doing that now at HRT. We just brought an auditor on, and he hasn't been there a year, and he's trying to get his arms around, how to structure and set the thing up, what he's looking into. So, we're probably a whole year away at a minimum from bringing on a second person.
I'm good with that.
So, I would think...
That makes more sense.
Okay. But what about the range? Is that 80 to, what did you say, 80 to 85, is it recommended?
I think, I think you need to go up to about 90 because the lowest paid...
Yeah, between 80 and 90.
Yeah, the lowest paid auditor of any of the surrounding cities is 89,974, which is, which is 90,000.
Well, that's Rona. It's not close.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Rona.
Yeah. So, the rest of them are in 99, 96, 9101. So, if we, if we go much lower than that, we're not, we're not going to get any applicants.
It looks like you're going to get lower than one.
So, 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 your other option is look at between 90 and 95,000, which is what, which is what the HR recommended.
It averages 100.
Yeah, I would, I would say 90 to 100.
Yeah, that's fine.
Based on what the person qualifications are and all of that.
That's good.
But they got a lot of work to do.
There you go. Okay, is there any other discussion on that? So, we could, we could bear with one person auditor, 90 to 90. Okay. To 100, and let him assess that other staff individual. Where's Tony at? She's... Oh, you got somebody here? Okay, y'all taking notes.
Now, there's some things that Tim will need to do as far as adding that to the council's classification on the people that we hire as a council, even though the Journal Assembly included that in our charter. Okay. I was just talking about you, Tim.
Talked about some things on the independent auditor that we will need to do.
Right. I'll have those documents prepared for you for the next council meeting.
Okay.
You'll need, you'll need an amendment to the Pay and Classification Plan, and I will certainly prepare that to authorize the requisition and the pay scale. And you'll need an appropriation ordinance to appropriate the estimated budget of the office for the remainder of this fiscal year, and I'm sure I can get that information. I'll be glad to prepare those for you next council meeting.
Very good.
That's very good.
Okay.
Are there any other items? City Council Liaison reports?
The only thing I will bring up is that uranium mining, we probably need to go ahead and move forward on, on our position on that. The whole South Side has taken a position. Norfolk, Chesapeake has now come online, and as you all know, Virginia Beach did. And at the regional meeting last week, the PDC has come online with opposing that. And this weekend, we had a VML Legislative Conference, and they are now putting language together to recommend the opposition of that. And then, talking to some folks in Richmond, it seems like there's a huge opposition there. So, again, I know we said we were waiting for data. There is data out there. And again, with our neighbors' concern about the effects of it on their water, even though it doesn't directly impact us, it could. One of the speakers made a real good point at the meeting the other day, that, you know, in the emergency situations that we use Norfolk water, if Norfolk's fearful of the contamination and the possibilities of that, then, you know, we may, we may be offended. So, we probably want to go ahead and get our resolution prepared for our next meeting to do the same as all the other cities. We've even got cities over on the peninsula, Mr. Chandler, that has expressed some concern, even though they, as they say, don't have a dog in the hunt, but they want to support the South Side cities. So, we don't want to be the only ones still not having taken that position. So, I think by the next meeting, we should, we should take that position as well and support our sister cities over there. Anybody got any objections to that? Okay. All right. That's it, Madam Clerk.
Members of council, you have no closed session items this evening. Dinner is available if you'd like to get some before 7:00 PM.